Ladies and gentlemen, it's six o'clock and I'd like to call the August 19th, Columbia County Planning Commission meeting to order my daughters trying to call me. She's distracting me there. I'm sorry. If y'all would please stand with us. Commissioner Wilder will lead us in our invocation. Commissioner Caraway will lead us in a pledge.
Stand by with us. Lord, we want to thank you again for another beautiful day. We thank you for the sun now to make everything grow. We ask that you look over tonight. You look over our meeting. We thank you for all those people who have had the time to come visit with us tonight and say their piece. We ask that you guide us in this and all things.
But allegiance to the flag, states of America, republic which is there.
Thank you. Be seated. If I could remind you to please silence your cell phones. We do have five commissioners present tonight. Commissioner Futch came in on a hot plane from New York, I guess, to make the meeting tonight. We thought he was going to be missing and I appreciate you coming in. Gentlemen, you've had an opportunity to review the minutes from the last meeting from August 5. If there are no changes or amendments or additions to those minutes, I need a motion for approval.
So moved.
Do I hear a second? All in favor? Motion to approve the minutes passes 5-0. Gentlemen, you've also had a chance to review the agenda for tonight. If we have no additions or amendments, I need a motion for approval.
I moved.
Do I hear a second? All in favor? Motion passes 5-0. Before we begin, I'd like to take a moment to clarify that the Board of Commissioners is a recommending body to the Columbia County Board of Commissioners. Decisions made on tonight's rezoning and variance request will be forwarded to the Commissioners for final action on September 7, 2021 at 6:00 PM in these chambers. Sir, can I ask you to remove your hat, please, when you're in the meeting? Thank you very much. If you wish to address the Board of Commissioners at their meeting, please see Ms. Kara Harden and she'll give you a request to speak for them. We're less formal in these chambers. If you'd like to comment on one of our public hearing items, please raise your hand. We'll ask you to come up to the microphone and take three to five minutes to give us your take, either for or against. If you have something else you'd like to discuss on the record, we have a public hearing portion of the meeting at the very end of the meeting. Same process, raise your hand. We'll invite you up and take your testimony for three to five minutes and we'll go from there. That being said, we'll move right into tonight's business. Ms. Neal, temporary use authorization, tax map 063 Charlie.
Yes, so this is a request for a temporary use authorization at 5193 Oak Springs Drive on 2.2 acres, currently zoned R, residential agricultural, then to have a travel trailer during construction. This shows the location of the site and the R zoning surrounded also by R zoning. And this shows the location that they plan to place the 38-foot travel trailer on the property. The applicants indicated that they're currently working with a manufacturing provider to try to get manufactured home. However, they're having some difficulty with their inventory at this time. Therefore, they may be seeking alternative plans to construct a home on the property. Therefore, they have not applied for permits, but they are intending to either have a permanent manufactured home or a constructed construction of a permanent home within the one year that temporary use would cover. And staff recommends approval.
Gentlemen, do you have any questions? This is not a public hearing, so I'll need a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the temporary use authorization for 5193 Oak Springs Drive.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries 5-0. Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Neal will stay with you for provisional home occupation, tax map 074.
Yes, so this is a request for provisional home occupation for Double D Woodworking LLC at 281 Mount Folly Road on 2.24 acres, currently zoned R2, single-family residential for a woodworking shop. This shows the location of the site off of Oakley Purple Road and Oakley Plantation subdivision. The subject parcel is zoned R2 as well as the areas that are around it, with the exception of the one property to the north, which is for Columbia County Fire and Rescue. This shows the aerial of the site and this is the site plan. The applicant's proposing to utilize the existing workshop, which is here where the star indicates. It's a 1,080 square foot workshop for wood crafting and he's primarily going to be making outdoor furniture to be sold online through craft fairs or word of mouth. He does not expect to have any traffic to the site other than to come maybe pick up an item here or there. All storage and materials and products will be kept within the workshop or under the overhang on the west side of the workshop on this side. An applicant has indicated the interior walls of the workshop are aligned with 716 OSB that creates a minimum four-inch air gap between the inner and exterior walls to mitigate noise. And he also plans to add insulation to the building. He's been utilizing the same workshops since 2018 as a hobby and has not had any complaints from his neighbors. He has not indicated any hours of operation since he does have another full-time job and this will be like a hobby job for him. However, he will be required to make sure he's following the nuisance ordinance within the code. Dust is mitigated using a small dust cyclone attached to the shop back that's portable to move from tool to tool as he works. And he does plan on purchasing a bigger cyclone, which will be located under the overhang as well, not visible from the neighbors. And he also has an air filtration system that he intends to upgrade in the future. And scrap materials, wood chips, and wood dust will be used for future projects or within his fire pit or grilling. He has spoken with two of his neighbors that will be affected the most, these two right here, will be affected by the workshop being right behind the residences who have provided letters of support. The property does have a natural barrier surrounding the workshop made of tall trees, shrubs, and makes it difficult to see from the neighbors. You can go to the next line. This shows the front of the property from Oakley Purple Road. I'm sorry, from Mount Folly Road. As you can see, you can't really see their, his property from the road. This shows the existing site, the workshop, and this is where those two residences are. And this also shows the back behind those two residences. And the Columbia County Fire and Rescue is that property up there. This shows some of the furniture that he's making as well. Purgis, the aerial, Purgis, the home is approximately 5,135 square feet and the existing workshop is 1,080 square feet. So it's less than the 50% that he would need for him to be allowed to have a provisional home occupation. Staff does recommend approval with two conditions. One, the dust cyclone and air filtration system equipment must be enclosed to mitigate the noise and power tools shall only be operated while inside the building. And that concludes staff recommendation.
Thank you, ma'am. Gentlemen, any questions? This is not a public hearing. I'll need a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with condition provisional home occupation for Double D Woodworking, 281 Mount Folly Road.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
And it's with conditions?
Correct.
All right. Seconds still hold?
Yes.
Any discussion? All in favor? Approve carries 5-0. All right, we'll move into our public hearing portion of the meeting tonight. Ms. Mystery, file RZ 210807, R3 to P1.
Yes, sir. This is 4031 Riverwatch Parkway on .93 acres. The current zoning is R3, single-family residential, and the request rezoning is to P1 Professional for a proposed adult daycare for less than seven adults. Here is the location on Riverwatch. And here is the zoning. The yellow is the R3 and the surrounding zoning. The light blue on the top is Petersburg Station PUD. And then you have some various other zonings, apartment, townhomes, and some commercial. Here's the aerial of the property. It is a single-family house. And these lots are a little deeper than other parts of Riverwatch. They're about 260 feet. Here is a plot of the property. And here's a site photograph. So the applicant is aware that the house, the building will need upgrades for building code and the site will need upgrades for landscaping and parking per code. They, the applicant is a registered nurse and has experience for 25 years. She's noticed that this type of demand is on the increase with working, working couples needing a place for aging parents, and that's what she intends to do here. Here's a map showing where the utilities are, so they are on water and sewer. And the proposal is a sketch that shows that there will be landscaping and parking as required per code. Here's a future development map. It is in the neighborhood's area, but the professional corridor. An important consideration is that the surrounding properties that are residential could technically have a home occupation for a similar use for daycare without requiring rezoning. But because the applicant is not going to be living on the property, she requires the P1 zoning for that. So staff recommends approval to P1 for the daycare.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Gentlemen, any questions to staff? Is the applicant here this evening? Yes, ma'am. Would you like to come forward and give us any additional information? All right. Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? All right. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me. I'd like to make a motion on RZ 210807, rezoning from R3 to P1 to be denied.
Do I hear a second? Okay, gentlemen, any discussion? Yes, sir? All in favor of denying the application as submitted? Raise your right hand. All opposed. Motion passes 3-2. Mr. Butler, file VA 210805.
Well, I think we're going to do RZ 210808 first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
I'm sorry.
And we could do it if you want.
I just got excited. I know I was going to get to hear from you three times in a row here.
That's fine. This is a request for rezoning at 3,001 McCary Court and off Industrial Park Drive. Currently zoned, planning a development, about 11 and a half acres, currently undeveloped. Requested, requested a rezon M1, proposed light industrial use. Here's the location of the property. Again, this is the portion that we're talking about and also other parcel. Being off Industrial Park Drive, as the name implies, it does have industrial around it. We have M2 and C3 across the street, also M1 to the north. To the west is One Marshall Place, and currently zoned R2. To the south is some more of the PUD as well. Aerial view of the site, again, undeveloped, also the existing site and the plot of the property. And the conceptual plan, so the idea here is to develop this parcel for light industrial use, AKA office warehouses. Not really concerned from a future development standpoint, again, also not really concerned from the overall zoning of the area. It does include both these parcels. The applicant didn't really give us a design on this one, but again, the rezon M1 probably sees something very similar to what's there. We'll be talking in a few moments about the variance, which will have to do with, can't draw to it one time, will have to do with the creek there, or the branch, as some might call it. Again, this is a concept plan. This is not any sort of vesting or anything. This is a straight zoning. This is provided to show what may be developed there. Here's an example of the building. Again, the applicant currently has property over on Pierce Court. This is what they're intending to build more of in the area. In future development, this is within the Evans Town Center Activity Center. This, this use is probably fine here. Again, it does actually specifically spell out that on the periphery of the Evans Town Center Activity Center, it's supposed to have industrial uses. This is on the periphery and is an industrial use. This certainly meets the intent of the future development map. There are a couple of, I won't really say concerns, but some things they'll care over from 2018 when the property was rezoned. You do have to the, to the west, you do have the residential neighborhood. So there's a condition regarding the lighting on the site. Has it give us a photometric plan showing that foot candle readings are one or, one or less of the property line? Also, we have one for the buffer. We have a 40-foot buffer at the back of the property. One of the conditions there is that the, basically the 25 feet adjacent to the residence has to remain undisturbed. That is a hill. It's already vegetated. So again, going into that, not really the best idea. But again, that will allow that to remain and the remaining 15 feet, they can disturb and do what they please with it, but that's if you re-vegetated, meaning the buffer's a screening code. Environmental has, has a condition that is more of a, very much an FYI. Property does have 100-year and 500-year floodplain on it. The uses could have something that is considered a curable facility. They do, there are certain requirements for that. That's what this condition kind of spells out. I won't really get into that for this request. That concludes staff recommendation.
Gentlemen, any questions to staff? This is a public hearing. Is the applicant here this evening? Yes, sir. Is there anything you'd like to add to Mr. Butler's presentation? All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion on, excuse me, RZ 210809, rezoning from PUD to M1 to be approved.
What number? Would you restate the number?
RZ 210808.
Thank you.
What did I say, 09?
09, yes, sir.
To be approved.
With conditions?
Yes.
Do I hear a second? Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries 5-0. Mr. Butler, excuse me, file VA 210805.
I have a request for a variance, section 9898, lists a lot of structural requirements for the property we just looked at on 3,001 McCary Court and off Industrial Park Drive. Remove the maximum building setback on these properties. Here's the location of the property. On Industrial Park Drive, McCary Court, done and currently zoned, planning a development. Also, everything around it we've already discussed, aerial view, undeveloped, existing site, also the plat, and the concept plan. So the issue here is that this will be within Evans Town Center once it is rezoned. I mean, it currently is as well, but there's a little bit more of an issue for being zoned M1 versus planning a development. You do have a maximum setback right here of 90 feet from the center line of the road. A little difficult to meet that. Again, we have this creek slash branch that goes through here. Can't really put a building to meet that 90-foot setback. You could probably meet it over here, maybe able to meet it here as well, but overall, can't really meet the end of the Evans Town Center overlay in this situation. Due to that fact, staff recommends approval to remove the maximum building setback from the property.
All right. Gentlemen, any questions to staff? This is a public hearing. Mr. Herbert, is there anything you'd like to add? All right. Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak either for or against this particular variance? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chairman, in conjunction with the motion for the above item, this VA 210805, I make a motion for approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries 5-0. Butler will stay with you, file RZ 210809, R1 to, and C1 to R1.
Correct. Is there a 48, 48 Riceboro Road, about 16 and a half acres. Request is to rezon the entirety of the property to R1, single-family residential. Here's the location of the property on the south side of Riceboro Road. Done of the property, again, you have this little piece of C1 here. That's kind of what we're dealing with tonight. That was rezoned back in the 70s for something that never got built. Everything around it mostly is owned R1. You do have the planning and development here for Rice Farm. Again, everything around it's primarily residential. Again, aerial view of the site, also the existing site itself, and the plot of the two of the properties. You have to kind of look at both these to get the, how it all works out. Overall, again, no real, no real problems removing the C1 from, from the property. Again, back in 1976, it was rezoned for, I believe it was a landscape business. Never put there. This has been, been there for a while. I believe the applicants do propose to carve out that, that house at some point. And there's basically getting rid of that. Had no issues with any kind of subdivision of the property. First, future development is within the neighborhood's character area. It's supposed to have residential uses within it. Again, limited to C1 definitely meets that intent of that, of that future land use. So this does meet the intent of the future development map. Due to all these factors, staff recommends approval of the request to R1. Close staff recommendation.
Thank you, sir. Gentlemen, any questions to staff? Is the applicant here? Yes, ma'am. Is there anything you'd like to come forward add, or Mr. Titus? Please come up. We know who you are, but if you'd give your name and home address.
Not sure who I am. Okay. I am David Titus, living at this address. And we're, we've been looking into the future of our, of our property and thinking about our children. And we have this one little piece of, of a commercial zone property that doesn't fit into the character of our, of our farm. So what we're really doing is making the characterization of my farm universal across the board with R1. I recommend that you give approval to the action.
All right. Gentlemen, any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve file RZ 210809, rezoning from C1 to R1.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries 5-0. Ms. Mystery, got a rezoning, file RZ 210810, C2 to C3.
Yes, so the location is 255 Bobby Jones Expressway on .61 acres. The current zoning is C2 general commercial and existing use is a contractor's office. The request is a rezoning from C2 to C3 heavy commercial for a contractor's office with outdoor storage. Here's the location on, it's actually addressed off Bobby Jones, but the frontage is on Settlement Road and is near the county line. Here's a zoning map that shows the red, which is the C2, and you do see some C3 zonings here that were done in the last few years for similar uses. Here's a close-up of the aerial that shows the property with frontage on Settlement Road. The applicant does own a couple of the adjacent properties as well. Here is the plat of the property. And here's some photos of the existing site. So there is a variance application with this, which will be the next item. The, the applicant is looking to add an addition on the left-hand side of this building, which has triggered the rezoning and the variance applications. That is on the other side, so the addition will actually go in this location here. Here's the site plan, and that's where the existing building is and the, and right there. And the future development map, it is in the Martinez Activity Center, so the use is compatible with some of the zonings on, some of the uses on Settlement Road. The staff is recommending approval for the C3.
Mr. Sterling, would it be appropriate to go ahead and allow Ms. Mystery to present the information for the variance, and we can take this as two separate motions, but go ahead and get the information or the presentation?
Yeah, I think for purposes of clarity of the total request, you can certainly continue with it, but definitely two motions.
Ms. Mystery, would you continue with the information from the variance?
Yes, sir. Same location, 255 Bobby Jones Expressway. Here's the same aerials and zoning. And here's the site. So if we stop here for a minute, you can see the existing site and you can see the site plan. With the addition, the request for variances to setback and buffer, so if the C3 rezoning is finally approved, C2 next to C3 requires a 20, 20-foot buffer, and that will be too much for the applicant to limit use of the site. They already have the fences on the sides, which will have, which will act as a structural buffer with no landscaping. C3 requires 30-foot side rear setbacks. Again, that would limit a use of the site. So that's what the variance is for as well. So the proposed, so the proposed setback on this side is 2.5 and these two sides will be 5. And then the buffer will be 0 on those sides, but require a fence. Here's the map showing the utilities. And the setback variance, you can see where the existing building is actually in the setback, so that proposal is a 2.5 feet. Here's a photograph of the other part of the site, too. And the applicant is aware that some site improvements are also required. Any required parking will be paved and the outdoor storage can be on part of the gravel area, and a landscape strip is also required. So the request is for variance to 90-98, 90-139, and 90-147, H1C. And the recommendation is to prove with the following condition. The side and property lines, side property lines and the frontage on Settlement Road will require a solid fence for the outdoor storage provision.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Gentlemen, any questions to staff? Okay, is the applicant here this evening? Yes, sir. Is there anything you'd like to add? All right. Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone who'd like to speak either for or against the proposed rezoning and variance? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion first for file RZ 210810.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve file RZ 2108010, rezoning from C2 to C3 at 255 Bobby Jones Expressway.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Approve carries 5-0. And now I'd like a motion to approve, deny, or to table if the approval, it would be with the conditions for file VA 210806.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve with condition file VA 210806, variances to reduce the sides and rear setbacks, remove buffer requirements for the property at 255 Bobby Jones Expressway.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Question? All in favor? Approve carries 5-0. And our final item tonight, file RZ 2108-11, change of conditions, tax map 078, parcel 048 Foxtrot. Ms. Montgomery?
Yes, sir. This is a request for a change of conditions for the property at 4045 Evans to Locks Road. Property is located on the north side of Evans to Locks Road and is currently zoned PRD, planned residential development, under two separate zoning files from 2016. This was actually the first PRD approved in the county when the, once the zoning district was created. Under that approval, there was a condition applied on both rezonings that required buffers along the exterior property boundaries to remain undisturbed. This was a bit of a challenging site, and as we'll see in a moment, that hasn't quite been possible. This is the aerial of the site from prior to it being developed. And the previous site photo, you can see it dropped off quite a bit from Evans to Locks Road. It also had quite a bit of slope across the site, which made it quite challenging to develop. The original construction plans approved back in November of 2018 by the Planning Commission actually included four retaining walls around the site. And then it also did show the required buffers, which were 20 feet on Evans to Locks Road and 15 feet around the perimeter of the project. This is the existing site currently. They have been making some progress slowly on developing the site. And kind of shots of the existing buffers, Evans to Locks Road frontage clearly is not undisturbed. It's been graded and grassed. And this is the backside of the property where it backs into the Jones Creek subdivision. Again, also clearly disturbed and graded into that buffer. This was a tight site. It had a lot of grading challenges. A 15-foot buffer to be maintained undisturbed was probably somewhat unrealistic and probably wouldn't have had a lot of vegetation left after the, the site work. So what's been proposed instead is we have an alternate buffer plan from the applicants to show a replanted buffer that will include a structural element with the six-foot privacy fence as well. It's a little wider on this side. It's about 25 feet and shows the replanting on Evans to Locks Road as well. Overall, this will likely give a better buffer to the adjacent properties than what could have remained in that 15-foot. So with the alternate plan in place, long-term, this should, should help the area, shouldn't hurt it. In terms of future development, this is within the neighborhood's character area, so single-family residential use is anticipated for this area, which is what the project is currently zoned for. So in terms of the zoning itself and the use, it definitely fits in this character area. And with the buffer change, again, with the replanting, it should not, should not cause any detriment to the area. Staff is recommending approval with conditions, including mandating that the 25-foot structural buffer shown on that development plan we just looked at is provided on the final plans and that all of the buffer plantings and fencing be installed prior to approval of the final plat. And that concludes the recommendation.
Gentlemen, any questions to staff? I've got one. This, or maybe a couple, depending on how this goes. There has been significant Um, there has, has been significant runoff of this site, like we've had, um, you know, on a number of other sites in the county that are under construction with the weather we've had and that kind of thing. What steps will be taken to make sure, as this site's developed, that, that runoff is addressed so that it's managed appropriately as opposed to just running off in, into the area below this or on, on a neighboring property?
Right, so as it's developed, um, there, there does have to be stormwater management on the site, and they'll install the stormwater management ponds and things like that on the property as it develops to, to help control that runoff. Um, I don't have the, the stormwater plans handy tonight, but I, I believe the engineer's here and may be able to address that.
So there will be a, a stormwater plan submitted that the county has to approve?
There already has been one. Um, it was approved back with those construction plans in 2018. Um, it's just, the construction's not complete yet.
Right.
Um, they are supposed to have the BMPs and such in place to manage some of that runoff while it's under construction, but that's obviously challenging when we get a very heavy rainfall.
Okay, all right. Gentlemen, any other questions? Okay, is the applicant here? Yes, sir. Would you like to come forward and give us any additional information? Sure. You're gonna have some people here talking against it, so you might as well come up and...
Oh, Slaughter, 420 Gemstone Court, uh, representing the Seings on this Hanover subdivision.
Okay, I've, I've had several phone calls today about the runoff. What, what, what's the plan to, to try to mitigate that? You know, let's, let's assume you get approval tonight to proceed with this. What's the plan forward to, to try to stem the, the flow?
And we've been working with it as it's gone. Had, um, two ponds in place and blockulent and everything else added to it, trying to slow the water down, get the coloration out of it. Done extra cell fence, extra traps, and finally got it grassed, and it helped tremendously. Then once we get this final done and get the paving in, go back with the permanent grassing, clean up the ponds adjacent, which will allow for more sediment control there. They will stay in place. There's two of them, one large pond, smaller pond above it. They will stay in place until all construction of houses are complete, help prevent any more additional downstream sediment release.
This, this thing we, we approved in 2018? What's, what's taken so long to, to, to proceed with this? It seems like it's been, it's been an open wound on that, on that property for a while.
Yes, it has. And I mean, it's just been a slow process with the contractor and his schedule. And then, of course, we've had some wet weather between now and then, but that is a long time, and everybody is aware of that. Me, most of all, and, but, you know, we've tried everything we possibly could to mitigate the, you know, impacts. We're hoping we're in the final step, thing paved and finalized in the next, you know, thirty, forty-five days.
Okay, uh, again, assuming approval tonight, um, wha- what do you see as the construction calendar from, from, from now to completion? When you start getting houses on the ground and, and that kind of thing?
Like I said, we're, we're hoping with forty-five days, we'll have everything completed as far as the construction end of it is. Then we'll have to plat it and get the final plat approved with the ASBILs, so probably looking at sixty to ninety days to get through the whole process to get plats, you know, on, you know, to sell.
Assuming, assuming we have some dry weather.
Yes, sir. I mean, and it's at a point now, and, and this kind of stopped everything, you know, because we had to get this taken care of to be able to kind of go back to work. And they wanted to make sure this was gonna, you know, pass. So it's, it's a matter of dressing up the base and getting that in, get your paving in, get everything cleaned up and stabilized, and then we can set pins and ASBILs and...
Okay. Gentlemen, do you have any questions, Mr. Slaughter? Thank you, sir.
You.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Yes, sir. Please come forward, give us your name and home address.
Hey, my name is, uh, Trip Nanny. I live at 4113 Heritage Ridge, and that's in Jones Creek. Uh, prior to this site being...
Trip Nanny, are you representing the homeowners association, or are you here as a, as a, a private citizen?
Private citizen, but I am on the homeowners board. Uh, prior to, uh, this area being clear cut, we had basically zero runoff into the, I think, one of the ponds he mentioned within Jones Creek. Since that time, over the last three years, we've had, uh, varying degrees of discoloration, sediment, silt coming into that pond. I heard mention of that pond being remedied after the construction. I would still be uncomfortable with that, without it in writing to us. We've had our share of silt and runoff in Jones Creek. I'm sure you're well aware of that. Uh, this particular one has been reported numerous times over the year, and I think that has contributed to some of the delays in their construction. But, uh, we're still very unhappy. The level of that pond is, uh, basically the ducks walk across it now. They don't really have to float anymore. It's probably decreased in, uh, depth by at least three or four feet, and, and a lot of areas are a couple of feet deep. And our spillway dam has, uh, been blocked up due to debris and other various items floating down, not necessarily attributed to that area without identification, but we still had no problems prior to that area being cut.
Any questions? Thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming up. Again, is there anyone else who would like to speak either for or against? Yes, sir. Please come forward, give us your name and home address.
697 Jennings Road.
Yes, sir. Would you spell your last name for me?
T-A-N-K.
Okay.
S-L-E-Y.
Okay.
Now, I stay on...
These are recorded, so I want to make sure the ladies, when they're, when they're doing this, get your spelling right.
Now, I stay on top of it. Jennings Road. It runs down to the, where they building this up. It rained two days ago. My backyard was flooded. Nothing to stop it. Uh, it would be a disservice for someone to build a house there ten years from now. Got cracks in the concrete, in the brick, because the water gonna continue to flow. Now, the only way they can build it, they gonna have to stop the wall. Telling you, it ru- it runs through my yard, and matter of fact, it comes through, if you look up under my house, I can see where water is coming through my, through my, uh, underground, my, my home. But, you know, I'm not an engineer, you know, but I still think you guys need to get some engineers up there, start at my house and go all the way down. They gonna have to build it up and put a sewage there for it to run into another area, you know? And I've been there twenty-eight, twenty-eight years.
Yep. Ms. Montgomery, will, uh, stormwater deal with, with this type of situation?
We asked you.
Either one of them. Mr. Sterling, you can dive any time.
Dang it. Um, yeah, I, I mean, part of the, the delay in the, the construction process has been the fact that, um, our stormwater division in particular, but I think also engineering services more as a whole, has been involved with the site. There's probably been at least a number of, um, shutdowns on the site to remedy the situation. Clear by public comment thus far that that hasn't completely, um, eliminated. Uh, I'm taking notes so that we can go back and talk to engineering services, who's over stormwater, but also obviously the road networks throughout this area, and talk to them about what they can do to remedy the situation. I'm not gonna offer that there's a immediate solution or that, that there's a given, uh, one-stop shop and the one thing, and it fixes it all. Um, you know, small events, you obviously get rain and, you know, that, some of that infiltrates, some of it, most of it does not. Uh, large rain events, we're gonna get a flush. That's, that's a given that happens in my yard, and I'm sure happens in everybody's yard throughout the county. This situation is not, not new and has certainly, uh, been longstanding. I know stormwater has been working very diligently to try and rectify, to the extent that they can, uh, working with Mr. Slaughter, uh, who is a project engineer to resolve these issues. I'll make sure that they are aware of it. I know that when this goes forward, the Board of Commissioners will be asking similar questions.
Could we go back to the, to a, a larger plat? And sir, if you could point where your house is on the, on the overhead here?
That guy.
So you're above the site. Where's the water coming from that's flowing through your property?
Well, the water coming from the, from the back of my property.
Good.
But...
So all the water that's on your property is coming off your property. It's not coming from that subdivision off to the left?
No, it's not coming from that subdivision. What to do, now, I have a, I have a supply tank in the front of my property, which goes that way.
Okay, so, so the grade on your lot's throwing all the water onto you. Okay.
Mr. Tansley?
Yes.
Have you talked to anybody specifically from the county, and they've been out there and looked at it at all?
No, because the water is going down. I've been there twenty-nine years. I ain't never had no supply tank problem, because it's coming, it's going down here. It's flowing. But see, when it get down to the bottom of the hill, you know, that's where the issue is. And it gets down to property where they trying to build it. I don't, I, I, I mean, I don't have any, any problem. I gotta, that's where my, 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 um, my supply tank line going here, going back, going down there, going straight down to their property. That's in the front, and the back, it just go. I got a, I got a, I got a swimming pool there, and behind the swimming pool, there's a druck that go straight down. Now, either they gonna build it up, either gonna put a sewage line in there or something to, to support the water. And they got, they gonna have sewage in this, right? They putting sewage on they, every...
Yeah, yes, sir. They, they will have public water.
What, half, I mean, a quarter of acre, so they got to put sewage in there. So what they need to do, I mean, I'm not an engineer. I got enough sense to know that they need to pull a sewage from the top, all the way down to pull in there. If they don't, those houses gonna be on slabs, right? Come on, talk to me.
Okay.
Right, they gonna be on slab, so therefore, they gonna have some issues with water.
Ms. Tansley, we'll make sure that we're taking notes, and we'll make sure Mr. Slaughter's got those, and that, uh, that Stormwater Utility, uh, tries to address the issue.
So coming from Jennings Road, up there where Jennings Road is, all the way down, my backyard, they need to come in there and put sewer line in there. Get some engineers to look at it. I, I'm not trying to stop progress.
It seems to me that we just need to get somebody from Stormwater Services to contact him and meet him out there and let him see what he's talking about.
Yeah.
That's the least we can do as a service.
Yeah, I, I'm pretty sure that they've been out there, and I know they've been out there a number of times. I'll probably, what I'll end up doing is tomorrow, I'll talk with the deputy manager and, uh, director of engineering services and see what, uh, what needs to be done to get out there and kind of look at that holistically.
If you could give up some, give him your phone number before we leave tonight.
Okay.
But, and another thing I want to add.
Ms. Tansley, we got five minutes. We've been moving.
Five minutes? Well, I didn't know what this was going on till y'all start changing everything. But anyway, here we go. The other thing I want to add is, you got a lot of kids around there. So, got a bus goes down there and pick up kids. That Jennings Road is a very small road with a bus, people coming in and out. He's got a lot of homes down there. I don't know how many homes over there and the other, on the right, but a lot of homes with kids. So, they gonna have to come out the front to Evan, to Evans to Lock. Because if they come out that back way, we gonna have some issues. Somebody gonna have some accidents, and you really need a stoplight up there somewhere. It's, it's bad.
Thank you, sir. That's, that's out of our purview here. That's a, that's a whole nother issue. And sir, if I could get you to, to get with him after the meeting, so we can go ahead and finish this up. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone else who'd like to continue the discussion? Yes, sir. Please come forward and give us your name and home address.
Hey, everybody? Name is Tony M. Pounds, senior. I live at 705 Jennings Road. Could you pull the big sight back up with all the color where he... Okay, I stay right here at 705 Jennings Road there, and what I'm out there, where they went in here and dug out this...
You know, you can, you can use your finger and mark on this for us to show us where you're talking.
Where they dug out, where they dug out this bank here, and that water is washing that bank down now. It's got gullies. If you go up there and look, it's got little valleys in it, and back here, here, it just done washed that out completely. And I just want to keep bringing something else up. This buried place here, when they put this place in here, they just supposed to have just one interest, just the main interest here, not back here. It wasn't supposed to have just one interest. They got two. And is this place here gonna have another interest that come out?
No, sir.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure, because like you said, school bus here, school bus come pick up these kids, that'll be right back in here behind me. Then we got a daycare.
This is Mr. Pounds?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Montgomery, would the, the two areas that Mr. Pounds designated there be part of the, uh, the buffer that would have to be rebuilt and, uh, revegetated?
They would. They're also part of the site that will have retaining walls, so that slope that's eroding will actually be a, a constructed wall when the site is done.
Yes. Have you noticed that bank is being washed out from what the...
Yes, sir, and you can actually see there's a proposed retaining wall on the site. About there. And it goes along the back, too. So those areas that you're, you're pointing out that are slopes right now that are washing out are going to be retaining walls and actually constructed that way instead of remaining the slope.
Are they gonna finish that area in?
Yes, sir.
Up on, up on that dirt?
Yes, sir.
Are they gonna, okay, because if not, somebody gonna drive over.
Yeah, no, they'll, they'll have to have a fence on top of that wall.
All right, sir. Answer your question.
We got daycare back down in there. We got kids and things and things, so...
All right, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak either for or against? Yes, sir. Please come forward, give us your name and home address. Would you wait till you get to the microphone, please, sir?
I'm regreto court. Uh, I just want to make a general statement about this. I know we talked about doing some stuff to improve this as it goes along, to make it better in the end. In the end, the damage is already done. Already filled up the pond with silt. I'm a, I was a lifetime member of Jones Creek Golf Club. I lost that membership because of a pond and because of the issue. Away from that, but the point I want to make is, I play another course right now in Columbia County that there's a lot of silt running across some fairways, making a lot of mess. I would like to see us do a little better job engineering the water runoff up front, instead of having to go back behind this and clean it up. Basically, that's really all I wanted to say.
Okay, thanks, sir. Duly noted. Is there anyone else who would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Yes, ma'am. Ms. Brown. We know you, but if you'll give your name and home address, please.
My name is Judy Brown. My address is 4166 Tyndale Drive, and I live in Jones Creek. And I just want a clarification. Mr. Sla- Slaughter had stated cleanup ponds adjacent in his comments. Does that include the ponds in Jones Creek? I would like something specific in terms of what that means.
Mr. Slaughter, are you in a position to, to answer for the developer, whether if they're willing to mitigate the, the sediment in the pond? Okay, I'll tell you what.
The two that I was talking about were this pond on it, adjacent side, and the one...
Okay.
So it's, it, for clarity, it's this one here, and where, point the, draw on the other one?
Yeah, there's a little sediment.
Okay, that, I want to make sure.
And where's the Jones Creek pond on the map?
It'll be the other side of that road. Probably see it on the aerial.
Ms. Brown? To answer, to answer your question, no, they're not gonna clean up Jones Creek's pond. No, ma'am, because there was a lot of silt already in them. There's, there's, I played golf over there until...
Not that pond.
Or pond, yes, but not that pond.
We're talking about two different ponds.
Yes, the pond that's, that's the one that, on number eleven, the one that we're talking about is on number three. That was not, uh, that was not development started.
It was not. You're right.
All right. Mr. Slaughter, if you could get, uh, an answer to that and get with Mr. Sterling and Ms. Brown, if I could refer you back to Mr. Sterling to, to get that answer. I appreciate that. All right, with that, I'm gonna close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, uh, deny, or to table.
Chairman, I make a motion to disapprove file RZ 210811, change of conditions at 4045 Evans to Lock Road. Allock Road.
Do your second.
Second.
Okay. All right, the motion been made and seconded.
That was to disapprove.
Disapprove. Now, gentlemen, you realize that if this motion happens to pass, that nothing changes on that site. It stays as is. They can't do anything to improve this, the site shut down. Would that be a correct statement, Mr. Sterling?
For the most part, correct. The issue becomes, without the modification, the structural buffer and fence, if you will, they're, yes, they're at a bit of a standstill to figure out how to reestablish the previously vegetated buffer, which obviously is already gone. So this is an effort to mitigate the issues that have happened already on the site in trying to remedy a situation, to move this project forward so that it can be stabilized permanently and eliminate, hopefully, the future indiscretions that have happened with silt and sedimentation. Sooner this site can get stabilized and permanently grassed and vegetated and dealt with, the sooner that, you know, these folks won't have any issues that are happening around this area. Now, some of that may not be a direct result of this, but, you know, clearly, this site is contributing in some fashion. So just be aware, as the chairman indicated, that this is an attempt to try and find a solution to move this project forward so that it can get complete and can be permanently stabilized. Everything up to this point is temporary stabilization.
Do we know for a fact that that project has caused partially the problem that they're talking about?
I would think at least in part, for sure. I mean, there's been runoff from this site onto adjacent properties, no doubt about it. Is the entirety of the impact solely as a result of this site? That I wouldn't be in a position to answer, but I might guess would be probably not. I mean, I'm sure it's a contributing factor.
Over time, ponds fill in. I mean, that's...
That's absolutely right. You're gonna have to scrape them out and start...
So my question would be, would the gentleman like to withdraw his motion?
In light of the way Mr. Sterling put it, that it's just gonna continue to flow as is and get worse and worse, I'm gonna withdraw my motion to disapprove.
Okay, would the gentleman like to make a substitute motion?
With that, I would like to make a motion to approve with conditions. File RZ two one zero one one one, changing conditions at four zero four five Evans Allock Road.
Do it here a second.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries five zero. We have no legal matters? Any staff or commissioner comments? Not tonight. I'd like to thank you all for coming out tonight. I know there's some familiar faces out there, but we've also got some first timers. Hopefully, we didn't embarrass you too badly up here tonight. Do we have any public comments? Any other issues than were discussed tonight? Yes, sir, would you like to come forward? Please come to the microphone, give us your name and home address.
Terry Brown, forty-one sixty-six Tyndall Drive, Jones Creek. We've lived there since nineteen ninety-eight, and I have never seen that pond red like it has been in the last two years.
Zone number two.
Yes. It is red as Russell's shirt after, right after a deluge. It is abysmal what that pond does after it has been a deluge like we had a couple of days ago. It'll be red. It's, there needs to be some really strong conditions put on this, on this project.
You know, we've had some discussions, because, again, this is not the only site, and I think we, it's incumbent upon the commissioners to maybe come up with some different code and maybe get with some of the builders to talk about some, some other methods that other people are using other places to keep runoff. Maybe it's going from, is it a class three silt fence to a class one, or a class C to a class A?
You got A and C.
Yeah, so there may be some things that we can discuss that would take a change in code.
I've got a farm in Indiana, and I just put in a waterway up there that's not nearly as steep as what that is there, and they had to put in rip rap to slow that water down, just to give you an idea.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Yes, sir, Mr. Titus. Please come forward, if you would, so we get you on the recording. Have that silver voice on there.
David Titus. And the address that was given, forty-eight forty-eight, and it showed the little cottage there, that's not my house, and I didn't want anybody here thinking that I lived in that little cottage. We live at forty-eight fifty, which is right next to that, so I wanted to make that clear. Not everybody knows that. Thank you.
We'll make sure the minutes reflect that.
And David Titus steals the show once again. Yes, sir. Anybody else have any, yes, sir, please come forward, give us your name and home address.
Desiree Edman. S I R E, like desire. Of course, this is my first time at hearings. I'm just confused on how it actually works. Body was approved except for my wife, so it's denied. I don't know how it works. You know, with COVID going on and people trying to get back to work, a lot of senior citizens, parents are going, children are going back to work. COVID had died down for a bit, boys died before the Delta variant came up, and so my wife had this dream of owning her own adult daycare. We bought this house on Riverwatch Parkway. Concept that, you know, the possibility of it being approved for a professional zoning was really high.
May I ask, who gave you?
Well, I'm just, I don't, okay. Well, so the reason, the area, I mean, I guess my question is, I don't know why it was disapproved and denied, and what's the process of, we revisited, or I don't, I don't understand.
First, let me tell you that we're tasked with getting feedback from the community on, for the commissioners, because we're merely a recommending body. They'll take the information that we get from them, because we allow for more discussion. Many of you have been to a commission meeting. Have you seen as much discussion at a commission meeting as you've seen tonight on a routine basis? Occasionally, you'll see it, but not often. So we give all this information to them, and they have the final binding decision. So the recommendation we made tonight is merely that, a recommendation. I think that the feeling we have up here that it's not the highest and best use of the property, and there are a number of other concerns about exactly how the property's going to be changed. I personally didn't have enough information to decide to vote for it.
I'm sorry, say that again? The point is, you...
I personally didn't have enough information from you all to be able to make a decision in favor. And I had a friend that wandered out of one of these facilities one time that was killed, and that's where, where I just, I personally am worried about you being on Riverwatch Parkway with that particular type of facility.
An adult daycare?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm saying, so from what standpoint?
I can't be any clearer than that. I have a concern about that facility being on Riverwatch Parkway. And it would be a public safety concern, that's as a matter of fact.
As far as what? I'm new at this.
Well, it's, there's nothing new. I mean, it's not just for the residents, but for people driving down Riverwatch Parkway.
Because we've had an adult daycare where a person wandered off, that weren't being attended properly, and was hit in traffic.
Okay, that's what I was...
Now, I will, I will tell you, and I think Ms. Montgomery will back this up, if you all chose to live in that facility, we wouldn't be here now. You could do that without getting a rezoning. Is that a matter of fact?
That's correct. So as a home occupation, they can do a daycare for up to six individuals.
If you live in the property. But since you don't want to live in the property, that's what triggered this. So if you wanted to go forward with it and establish a residence there, you could withdraw without prejudice before the commission meeting and be on your merry way and do it. But if you want to get it rezoned professional, you have a whole different set of codes that you're going to have to come up to, because if they chose to do an in-home, a residential home oc, would they have to make the professional improvements?
No, sir, not as far as like paved parking. They may still have building code requirements they have to meet with the state licensing and things like that, but the site improvements would, would not really be an issue.
So there's another way to do it, if you wanted to live in the property.
Right, but, okay, I think you explained it too about the living there, and I understand that. And we have some, there was, in the paper, there was the email we received with conditions that need to be done, we understood that when we took on this venture, that, yes, the condition had to be done, the driveway, I'm sorry, driveway had to be expanded for two, to meet the requirement, transportation.
Right. Just because you're provided that doesn't guarantee a vote of approval here.
I understand.
All right.
So basically, what you're saying, so if we decide not to live there, there's no way that we can get a rezon.
If you, if you decide to live there?
No, no.
You don't have to get a rezon.
Right, no, I'm saying, I'm scared. If we decided not...
If you decide not to live there, this recommendation will go forward to the Board of Commissioners, and you can come and address them in this venue.
Okay, so it's not a meeting?
Yes, sir. There's one more meeting, and that is the Board of Commissioners' meeting on September seventh.
Right.
At six o'clock here in the same auditorium.
Yeah, and they'll have the final say. Their decision is binding.
Oh, I understand.
But if you happen to withdraw, if you ask to have it tabled so you can work on it further, you can set a table date in the future, you can do a thing called withdrawing without prejudice, which would allow you to come back at any point in the future and have it reconsidered. But if they vote against it and turn it down, you have to wait six months before you can reapply. So you may want to get with staff and discuss your options. You know, if you feel good about it and want to go in front of them, great, let's go forward and have at it. But if you want to rethink your plan, talk to staff, or I'll give you my card and you can call me, and I'll be glad to talk you through and give you some ideas on how you may want to proceed. Okay, yes, sir, and appreciate your service.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to add to the public comment? Seeing none, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Do it here a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to adjourn carries five zero at seven oh two. Thank you for coming out. Our next meeting is September second, twenty twenty, at six p.m. in these chambers. Thank you for coming out.
None by six thirty-one.